Next thing on the agenda, number four, the superintendent's report. The first thing is State Question 779. Do you want this?
Yes, thank you. Kind of have combined 779 and state funding just to kind of give us a little update. So where are we? Last year, our initial midterm appropriation in revenue was $25,652,000. The actual revenue we received from the formula was $24,839,000. Now, you notice I've got an asterisk by that. And the reason for that is that the way the formula works, in the chargeable part of the revenue from the formula, even if we don't receive that money, if you were to look at the Funding Formula spreadsheet, it would show you that we're receiving that money. And so last year, we were a little bit different in that because of the way they distributed autotag money, we lost some revenue that the state charged us for even though we didn't get it. And we had the same thing. We also had some gross production that what the state projected we would get, what they calculated in the formula, we did not receive. And then this year, our initial formula revenue was $25,324,276. So you can see that we're less than we were projected to be at the midterm last year, but more than what we actually received last year. So if you look at last year, we actually collected $812,000, less than we were supposed to. $348,000 of that was because of the revenue failure. That's the money that was cut from us by the state, from what Mr. Doflinger's official title is. But that's because of the revenue cuts that all state agencies took. We also collected $344,000 less in motor vehicle money than we were supposed to, and that's because autotag collections were down statewide. And rather than cutting all school districts the same percentage, they went ahead and redistributed autotag money based upon average daily attendance for last year, which meant that school districts that had grown since the last time the autotag formula was established collected more dollars. And those of us that had lost enrollment, lost significant dollars. And then in gross production, as a county, we just collected less revenue in gross production than we did the year before. And that was a trend across the state. This is a continuation of a downward spiral. If you look at the per pupil funding that we had in 2009, we received $3,275 per student through the formula. Our initial funding for this year is $3,050 a student. That's a loss of $225 per weighted ADM. So if you take that weighted ADM, multiply it by, take our weighted ADM for 2017, multiply it by $225.60. If we were funded at the same level as we were in 2009, we would have $1,865,714 more dollars in our budget for this year than we have. Report issued last December by the Center for Budget and Public Priorities, looked at K-12 education revenue data for all 50 states from 2008 to 2014. Our state aid has been reduced by 24.2 percent. That's the largest percentage cut in the country, and I've shared this with you before. Our state revenue per student, so that would not only be state formula dollars, but the money that the State Department distributes in grants or for other specific purposes, is down 15.3 percent. That's the fifth highest cut in the country. And then when you take state revenue and local revenue and combine them for that same period, our cut has been 10.1 percent, which is the ninth largest in the country. And it's important to look at that, and that's 2008 to 2004. Sometime in December, we'll get the report for 2015, which we can't, we can't be higher than number one in the total percentage cut. My guess is we'll probably either rise or lower in the rankings, depending on how you want to look at it, for the state revenue cut. And the same thing with local revenue. And then, in two years, is when FY16 will kick in. And of course, we now have this year. So we know that FY15 revenue was not as good as FY14. We know that FY16 is when we had the revenue failure. And we know that this year, we're starting off with less money than we were supposed to have last year. So I would anticipate that we're probably going to move up the rankings in state revenue per student reduction, and then the combination of state and local revenue. So what does that mean for us if you look at it on a regional level? And so these numbers just show you how we compare with our neighboring states, how much money they invest in their public schools. You can also look at their enrollment. It shows you a per pupil expenditure, and then it shows you how much more they spend or how much money we would have to increase spending by in order to catch up with them. And you can look at those deficits and see they're pretty large. Kansas has been in the news a lot for all the cuts that they've had in their state to their public schools, but you can see even with those cuts, they still fund their schools at a significantly higher level than we do. You can see that we're at the bottom. Our closest competitor, I guess, would be Texas, and it would cost us $765,000 to spend as much money on a per student basis as they do in the state of Texas. Those numbers are part of the reason, probably the primary reason, why we have the initial petition that is State Question 779. And you can see that the projections for K-12 education are $369 million to be used for teacher retention and recruitment, another $58 million to be used for student achievement, and you can see what kind of programs are covered by that. The estimate is that the tax, if it's passed, will raise $615 million. And you can see the breakdown. $378 million for teacher pay raise, $50 million for local reforms, higher education, $125 million, career technology, $20 million, and then early childhood grants, $50 million. This is just the language that is the state question. And just, it talks about, specifically says that 69.5 percent of the dollars will go to the several common school districts in proportion to population. It talks about the monies being segregated and then appropriated among the schools. And then it tells us what we have to use our share of the money for. 86.33 percent of that to increase teacher salaries is required by Section 4, and then to address and prevent teacher and certified instructional staff shortages in the manner most suited to local district circumstances. It allows us to do differential compensation or other methods of performance pay. And then it tells us what we have to use the 13.67 percent for. So what does that mean to our school district? The estimates are that this will increase our weighted ADM by $385.69 per student. What does that mean to K County? These are estimates for all the districts in the county. You can see that in Ponca City, that means that our state revenue would increase by $3.1 million. $2.7 million of that would be for salaries and retention and recruitment of staff, and then $433,000 for initiatives for the county. It would be $4.3 million in payroll, and then $692,000 in initiatives, and I'm sure some of that initiative would probably be used to hire additional staff. You know, there's been lots of debate, and I think over the next couple of months, you're going to see more information for and against this state question. It seems like there's, the municipal league, which is the organization of city government across the state, seems to be leading the charge against this initiative. And the two primary arguments are that, you know, school districts need to get their funding through property taxes and income taxes. They should leave the sales tax alone for cities. Just one of those, I didn't know it was going to do that. But if you look at TIFs across the state right now, in 2015, there were $445 million of Avalorm dollars that are not going through the Funding Formula because of TIFs that cities have granted to entities within their jurisdictions. The sales tax, if passed, will raise $428 million to go back to school districts. Now, one of the questions we always get, and I know as a board, you know, what can anybody that's an official, a school official, what can you say or not say? What can you do or not do? First of all, as public officials, we're not allowed to spend any money, authorize any expenditure, either in support of or opposition to any measure, which is being referred to a vote of the people by initiative or referendum. So what does that mean? It means you cannot use school resources for election-related purposes. You can't use school copiers to copy election-related materials. Can't use school phones and emails in order to support or oppose any candidate petition or question on the ballot. It's always important to remember this time of year, especially when we have a general election. School employees and board members should avoid using district-issued computers, tablets, or phones for campaign purposes or in support of a petition drive. What you can do and what school employees can do is write letters and emails using personal equipment. Identify your role and state that you are speaking as a private citizen, not on behalf of your school district. Individuals can campaign door-to-door on their own time. You can place signs in your yard, as long as you're not on school property or within 300 feet of a ballot box. You can donate personal resources, and you can do a campaign bumper sticker on your personal vehicle. The district can provide information to employees and district patrons about a ballot measure, and its potential impact on the district. Has to be factual in nature and must not advocate for or against a ballot measure. If you think about bond issues and the information that we share with the public on a bond issue, where we state that, you know, we're going to have a bond election, this is what the tax impact is going to be, this is what the funds of that bond issue will be used for. We can encourage people to vote, and we can remind people to vote on voting days. So we can put signs on the marquee, you can use your school messaging system. We can have forums on school district property. So if we wanted, somebody wanted to come and have a forum to speak for or against this issue, or to speak together, we could allow that to happen. And obviously, teachers can always teach about any referendum and the election process. We can hold mock elections, which we always do in a presidential election year, and we can always allow students to discuss electoral issues. So, anybody have any questions? Enrollment update?
Yep.
We are, our current enrollment, this is as of September 1st, is 5,031 students. That number is down from what we ended the school year with last year. Last year, we were right at 5,060 students. Usually, typical year, we will grow a little bit from May to September, and that has not happened this year. If you look at, you know, if you kind of want to, if you kind of analyze the numbers, we are down in our 4K enrollment, down about 40 students. We're down 57 students, kindergarten through fifth grade. We're down about 12 students in the middle schools, six, seven, and eight. We're actually up 97 students, nine through 12. We continue to add 4K students. When this report was published, we had 223 four-year-olds. We're now up to 241. So that continues to grow a little bit as we get further into the year. So obviously, you know, we continue to look at enrollment. I think that we haven't seen any numbers statewide. We know, if you remember when I talked about money, and I showed you how much money we had to spend per student, I had two asterisks by this year's number. And the reason I did that is when the legislature enacted the budget last year, we expected the cut that we took to be more significant. And the reason that it wasn't, in a typical year, we will see an enrollment drop, a weighted average daily membership drop, from the December midterm allocation to the end of the school year of about 13,000 weighted students. Okay? And so when you make budget projections, you project that there's going to be 13,000 less weighted students than there was in the January or the December midterm allocation. This year, statewide, weighted average daily membership dropped 25,000 students. So we actually had 12,000 less students to distribute formula dollars with when we got our allocation in July. Now, what we don't know, is that a trend? Are we going to see a decline of enrollment this year across the state? Are we going to see it maybe not bounce back as much as it had before? We don't know that. But if you think about what's happened to the economy across the state, the number of jobs that have been lost in the oil field, the number of oil-related jobs that have been lost, it would make sense that we may have seen an increase in enrollment, the record increase we had, because of the number of jobs that were available in Oklahoma as people moved into the state to work. And now that those jobs have been lost, it's possible those individuals have gone back to wherever they were living before. Again, we don't know that yet. We don't know that at this time. But if you kind of think back to the oil bust that happened in the late 80s, early 90s, we went through a period of several years where our state enrollment was either stagnant or it dropped. And it really wasn't until the late 90s, early 2000s that student enrollment started to really increase at any significant number. So obviously, the bad part about that is if you're, if you don't have young people, your state's not growing. I guess the good news would be that the limited state dollars you have go further because you have fewer students that you're educating. So we'll just have to see how that plays out. Anybody have any questions on any of that? And then the final item is we have our state accreditation report. And we are, the school districts and sites have been approved by the State Board of Education. The district status and site status are on the back of, I'll go through those for you. We are, the district is accredited without any deficiencies. We have two sites that are accredited with, one site with a warning, another site with probation, and that is Lincoln with probation and Garfield with warning. And that's based upon test scores, and it's based upon test scores for the 2014-15 school year. And we still, at this time, do not have the test scores for 15 and 16, for the elementary sites. We have third-grade scores. We don't have fourth and fifth grade scores. Is that still true, Barbara? We haven't gotten those scores in yet? One of the things that happened with the action by Congress last year to reauthorize ESEA with the new, every child, every Student Succeeds Act, is it tossed out the old accountability system that we were under, and we're going to replace it with a new accountability system, which will come into effect for the 17-18 school year. So what the State Department did is basically froze everybody in place. So wherever you wore for 14-15, you will stay there until the new accountability system is put into place. So when you see our accreditation report for next year, you're going to see the same listing for the school sites. Does anybody have any questions? I see you looking at that pretty hard, Robin.
No, I'm following your numbers.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Number five. Item number five is consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? This involves agenda with commentary, 5:2 minutes, and 5:3 consent agenda agreements under 10,000.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion, it's been seconded. Now, call for the vote.
Dr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Okay, the next thing is action items. Motion's already required. Number 6.1 is consideration of a vote to approve or not approve the following district financial reports.
Let me for approval of 6.1.
I'd like to put Q to table that for further discussion in executive session.
Okay.
David, I don't think, Gary, can we discuss fundraisers in executive session?
Let me just a minute, see what we've got here. No, we don't have it on the...
Okay. We can pull Q, David, and discuss it.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Okay. So we are voting on A through U with Q pulled out.
Q pulled out.
So do I have a motion?
Newsom was first.
Oh, he made a motion, and who seconded it?
No one.
I'll second it.
Okay. All right, call for the vote.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Okay. 6.2, consideration of a vote to approve or...
We need to talk about Q.
You can talk about Q.
Oh, talk about Q now?
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion's open for number Q.
If you remember the night that I asked for a further discussion on that, it was decided at that time that the board's the one that approved or disapproved of any fundraising.
Mm-hmm.
But when I read that thing the other day, Brenda has the full authority of making that decision for the board. And I read it several times, and that's not what we decided that night. That night, we decided the board's going to make the decision, not Brenda. Now, she can evaluate them, but we're the ones that's supposed to make that decision, not Brenda. And when I read that, it says that she's going to make the decision.
Where did you, is that in the...
2.15 to 2.0.
The policy that we're, in our policy?
In the policy, yeah.
Okay.
There's a sentence, and it reads, "Executive Director of Finance has full discretion in determining whether to bring a fundraising request before the board."
Okay.
Unless I'm reading it wrong, I'm like, David, to me, the board will make the final decision.
Right.
Have no problem, everything funneling through her, but she should not be the one to stop it, the way I read 2.15.
They were, I mean, yeah, if you remember, we talked about that night.
Right.
And I already know of one that would stop without our approval or disapproval.
Well, the biggest thing is, is if it's a policy, we're going to have to bring the policy back and change that policy.
Well, we're going to approve the policy tonight, so you can change the policy then. But I think...
I mean, I want her reviewing all of them, but I don't want her making the decision for us whether we should. I mean, I know it's a law...
But David, if we, I think that the ones that, and I don't know specifically what one we're talking about, but if it's a fundraiser that doesn't meet the criteria that has been established for fundraisers, why would we bring it to the board?
Because it's our choice, not hers.
But you have, but we have the policies in place that talk about...
Unless, but that night, we said there can be extra fundraising to take place.
Right.
And it's our decision, our decision, that's what we voted on, to make that call. That's what we voted on that night. I can go back, we can go back and get the minutes. I mean, that's why I questioned it that night.
But the thing is, is what you're asking for is if there's something that she pulls, and it's going to have to come back to us by itself.
Well, I think what we've done in the past is if there's a fundraising request that violate, that is not in accordance with the established policy of the board, it doesn't meet that established policy, the criteria that we set. Let's say, for an example, it's going to be a fundraiser that wants to raise money for an outside organization. It's not related to kids, it's not related to students, it's not a...
Let's do the one that I know about, okay?
Okay, what's the one you know about?
Papa asked on Veterans Day to be able to have a special event for the veterans, and any money raised at the gate would go to the veterans.
Mm-hmm.
Now, how in the world is that against our policy?
Because that's an outside organization. That's not, that's not, that's not, that's not benefiting students.
Who cares if it benefits students? It's benefiting an organization.
But it's a...
And the students want to do it.
But it's a...
Why are we stopping the students to be able to do that?
Because when you look at our policy, it says that we don't do fundraising for outside organizations.
That's more considered a solicitation of funds.
Brenda, why don't you come to the microphone?
That's not what we define a fundraiser. That's a solicitation of funds, using our students to solicit funds for outside organizations. That's not a fundraiser. Fundraisers are where students...
I agree, the students weren't being used for that fundraiser.
But that's not a fundraiser, that's a solicitation of funds, asking people to donate funds for outside organizations. That's not what we consider fundraisers.
Okay.
Basically, fundraisers for us would be anything that's going to be spent on our kids.
Right, what our students generate is for their activities. That's what we consider fundraisers, when our students sell things or raise money for their activities. That is a solicitation of funds, which is against board policy at this time.
You see the difference?
That's not what we consider a fundraiser.
Either way, it's...
So I guess what we'd need to do...
And I've never, I've never turned down a fundraiser fundraiser. The only thing I, and I, if people want to solicit funds for specific causes, we have brought one to you. But past that, we have taken the stance that the board policy says no soliciting students to solicit funds for outside organizations.
So, really, David, what you'd probably need to do, we need to look at the solicitation of funds policy, if you've got a concern with that, not the fundraiser.
Yeah, because that's two different items.
Yeah.
Well, it's a little bit deeper than that. Oklahoma law, and you gotta realize there's a lot of attorney general opinions on this, if the, if students are involved in the raising of the monies, they are by definition an activity fund, and the funds belong to the school district. And there's only certain things you can spend those funds on. You can't just turn around and donate them to an organization charitable or otherwise. So, our policy's based upon the law. So, if you're looking at the policy, you need to consider it in the context of what the attorney general opinions say. So, I just thought I'd throw that in, if you take a look at that.
So, Gary, is there any? I mean, what option does the board have then?
Well, the policy as written pretty much states the law. So, I don't think you have a whole lot of flexibility in rewriting the policy. It's just the nature of the beast. So, if there's a booster club that does not involve students in fundraising, so that it doesn't rise to the definition of activity fund, they can raise monies and do whatever they want with it.
So, if an outside organization, the parents wanna sit at the gate and say, donate to Gary's fund, is that legal?
Well.
As long as they don't use students.
Sitting at the gates, the key words there.
Because it's on school property?
Yeah, you have to avoid being an activity fund, and unfortunately, there's no clear and concise definition of what that is. You have to kind of run it through the verbose attorney general opinions and.
And I think what Dr. Kincaid's asking, and it's, again, we come up against this all the time. Lots of good, worthy causes, okay? That, that, that the board may want to allow them to somehow solicit donations at an event. Could be a football game, could be a softball game, could be a track meet, whatever it is, okay? It, you know, my opinion has always been that if the board could approve, if somebody, again, you know, went through and filled out the right paperwork and followed procedure and asked to solicit funds in a proper way, then the board could approve that. But Gary, are you saying they can't?
No, I'm saying just be careful that it's not treated as an activity fund, and the auditor would agree.
Okay. So, where do we go from here?
Don't involve students is, you know, let this test.
Okay.
The main one.
All right.
And we did have a baseball tournament, a golf tournament, or a baseball, that the baseball team did, and they did put a donation at their golf tournament, because that was the Booster Club's golf tournament, and they chose to take donations at that golf tournament, the baseball team did. And they did do that, but it wasn't at a school activity. It was a Booster Club event that they sponsored.
So, there are ways for it to happen. It just has to.
It wasn't at a Ponca City Public Schools activity. It was at an activity that the Booster Club hosted for, and they did solicit donations. And they gave out flyers at one of our football games, but they did collect donations for a cause at their golf tournament. But it wasn't on school property, and it wasn't a school activity.
But they probably couldn't do that at a football game.
Yeah.
Well, it's more gray. Let's.
It's more gray area there. That was the Booster Club's golf tournament, and they did that.
Right from the school.
Do we need to vote on Q now, of all the discussions?
And the only reason I wouldn't bring a fundraiser is if it didn't fit the criteria, and we'd work with them to fit the criteria, and then we would bring it to you. I wouldn't just turn it down on my own.
Okay.
I guess we really will have to look at solicitation of funds policy, separate from this. So, why don't you withdraw your exception to Q?
All right, I withdraw my exception to Q. My counselor here on the right. I got the one on the left and on the right.
Motion to approve Q.
Dr. Kincaid, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I did. I mean, it helped, it's just.
Okay.
But it's okay.
We wanna help people.
I know we do, and I just.
And it's tough sometimes, because those are all good, worthy causes.
I understand. Not using school property or kids, then we have an exception.
Yeah.
Okay, Don's made a motion to approve Q. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Okay, six-two, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve estimate of needs for the FY seventeen.
I'm motion to approve six-two estimate of needs.
Second.
Does anyone have any questions? It's been, the motion's been main seconded. Any questions?
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Okay, six point three, consideration of a vote to approve or not approve new and revised board policies on the attached detailed report. Do we have any questions about any of those revisions?
I think we reviewed these last meeting, wasn't it? Last meeting, we had them on there.
So, do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any additional questions? Okay.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Six point four, consideration of and vote to enter into a ninety-nine-year lease agreement with the city of Ponca City for a section of land, including blocks nine and ten of a wet sole addition, for a cost of a dollar per year. Any discussion?
I wanna make one point, because I think it's important that the board, and I apologize for the lease agreement, not that the summary was in your packet, but not the agreement itself. There is a provision in the agreement, you know, we've had some questions about naming and naming rights, and what we're gonna name the building and that kind of stuff. And at this time, we don't have a name. We haven't, the board has not discussed that. We've talked about some things, but the board's not made a firm conclusion. And I know that there are mixed opinions on what should or should not happen with the name. When we received the original agreement from the city of Ponca City, it required us to name the facility the James Hutchins Memorial Concert Hall. And we, after, I guess, on my own, I informed the city that I didn't think that was appropriate, that, you know, the board would, that would be a board decision. In this agreement, there is a clause that says that, that if the, that if the building is named anything, it has to be named after Mr. Hutchins. I have talked to the city manager, and his position is, or he informed me that the city commission is firm on that. We don't have to name it after Mr. Hutchins, but if we name it after anybody, we have to name it after him.
You're talking about if we name it after a person's name?
After a person.
It can be Ponca City.
It could be the Ponca City Concert Hall.
Or School's Concert Hall.
Right.
Long as there's not an individual name.
Right.
Okay.
And, you know, my personal opinion, this is just my opinion, I think that when we, the facility's completed, and once the city sees how we maintain Mr. Hutchins' legacy, I would think that at some future day, if the board ever decides that they wanna name it after an individual or individuals or whatever, that that would be something that we could go back and renegotiate with the city. But it is an issue, and, you know, it's something that I felt very strong that you guys need to know about, that it's in there. And so, that's what you're voting on. The rest of the lease is great. I mean, the city's been very generous in the amount of property they're gonna allow, they're gonna allow, the things they're gonna let us do, and of course, a dollar a year for ninety-nine years is awful hard to beat, so.
Okay. With that extra knowledge, do I have a motion to approve six point four?
I'll move to approve six point four.
I'll second.
Are there any additional questions? Okay.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid. Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Six point five, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve Ponca City Public Schools' Child Nutrition Program participating in a purchasing group with other Oklahoma school districts through a piggyback provision with Edmund Public Schools, prime vendor contract with U.S. Foods. Jeff, do you wanna come up and talk about this?
This is a proposal to do what we've done the last couple of years. Each year, we've added more schools. We started this group of buying group of a lot of, there were a lot of small schools around that weren't getting pricing they needed, and it resulted in a lot of different things that we were trying to prevent, and so, we were trying to help a lot of schools. Also, it helped us a lot. And so, we have entered this agreement. The USDA this past year changed their regulations on how they would accept this type of group. And so, this is kind of a cutting-edge group that, there's only a couple in the country. And so, we're kind of the prototypes. So, we met with the USDA, we had a four-hour-long conference call, ironed out everything in this agreement. And we named Edmund the lead agency, because Edmund has had all of the verbiage that we needed to have in that, and it was already in place. And so, we decided to add Edmund. Probably in January, we'll be adding Oklahoma City to the schools. So, we started out with three million, we're at fifteen million with the purchases. We add Oklahoma City School, we'll be at forty-five million, and that's purchasing power. The more power you have to purchase, the lower your price. And so, but we've brought in a lot of smaller school districts who couldn't afford to, with the new regulations, to keep their program going, and this allowed them to do it. So, it's a really good thing for a lot of us. It doesn't, the entire district can buy on this plan, it doesn't have to be just child nutrition, it doesn't have to just be food or food-related products, it can be anything. And so, we belong to something called National IPA Pro Vista, which is a buying group, and it's a specialized buying group that specializes in schools, public schools, universities, and public entities. So, it's a really good thing, and we hope it can keep up. The biggest question I get asked is how can we tell we're getting a savings? We can tell the price of food and supplies is a moving target. It goes up and down based on the economy, based on the weather, based on recalls, based on a lot of different things. But we do feel like, even comparing to last year's prices, that we're down in the cost of doing food, and we need all the help we can get right now. I hope that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
Still get plenty of chicken for Wednesday?
Always get twenty-seven different types of chicken, we serve.
Wednesday's Chicken Day, I hear that all the time.
Yeah, I do, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve six point five?
Move approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Okay, the next thing is six point six, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve the following contracts. A, agreement with SHI for Imparo Software. B, agreement with CDW for the purchase of desktop 3D printers and filament. C, agreement with Apple Incorporated Education for the purchase of iPads for the Washington Pre-K Center. D, agreement with Catapult Learning for the MyData First Sight and Consulting Coaching Days for Garfield Elementary. E, agreement with Blackboard to upgrade to an ADA compliant version for the district website. Okay, do I have a motion to approve A through E?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We talked about each one of these in the finance committee, so I'll move to approve six point six in its entirety.
Okay, and we have a second?
Yes.
And does anybody have any questions on any of these? Okay.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve of a proposed executive session for the following purposes: to discuss the possible termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel on the attached detailed personnel report; to discuss confidential conversations with the board's attorney concerning pending claims and litigations; to discuss the purchase or appraisal of real property; and to discuss negotiations. And do I have a motion for an executive session? Because we need one.
Yep.
Have a motion.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Okay.
Whack it.
We're in the executive session. Questions for termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel. It's on the personnel report. Do I have a motion? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Okay, vote.
Mrs. Truitt. Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Number seven, new business.
Madam President, we have one item, a new business, and that is a recommendation that we employ Shannon Dear as a speech-language pathologist effective nine fourteen.
Do I have a motion to?
Do you have a motion to approve?
New business? Do I have a second?
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Any more new business?
Nope.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.